K L T V sun check, K L T V sun check. K L T V sun check.
Okay, welcome everyone to the 9:00 AM meeting of the B O C C. We got Mr. Hal Palmer here with us today to lead us in invocation. I'll turn it over to Hal.
Thank you, Chairman Rick. Russ says, "God morning to you and all and Kelly." Dear Lord, we just want to thank you for the government that you set up for us. Thank you for those that are willing to serve, willing to observe, and willing to record the minutes of this meeting. We would ask that you would bless each and every action and help this county become the county that you want it to be. And we bless this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you want to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a, it's probably a pretty short agenda today. Commissioner Raiders out rest of the week herding church kids at camp, so you're stuck with Commissioner Farrell and I today. Minutes, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes of July 9th.
Make sure your mics on. Yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 7th to 9th. Any comments, corrections, or anything you see on that? I'm not seeing anything on my pad. Okay, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll run down consent agenda. Should be a fairly straightforward call for hearings. We have a call for hearing to amend Chapter 6.12 for the animal control scheduled for August 19th, 2025. That'll be at 9:30. We've amended the dangerous dog section of that, which I think was 6.13. Don't quote me on that, but, and they found some things that need to be up to date in 6.12. They were in last week and kind of went over those there, so we'll have a public hearing on that. Agreements, contracts, bid awards. We have a contract amendment with the state of Washington Department of Corrections to house offenders and extend through June 30th, 2027. And to amend the per diem rate to $114.49. They do an annual review of the contract, and if there needs to be a rate change, it gets set into place. Pretty much, the rate is pretty much what the state's going to tell you, so that's kind of where we're at on that, but, but that's what it is. Item number three has actually been pulled. That one's not, not ready yet. The note I got was the insurance has not been finalized yet, so we're pulling. Item three is not part of the consent agenda. We're pulling that one out of there. Regional, Southwest Washington Regional Airport, 2025 operating budget. Two letters to board correspondents. We sent a letter of support to Sean Duffy, Secretary at the U.S. Department of Transportation. City of Longview is applying for some safe streets and roads money, and they just, they ask us to send along a draft saying we support their request. I, I know we had some questions on that. Did we get those answered?
Yeah, that.
You felt comfortable with it after you talked with them? Okay. Executed interlocal agreement with Callis 911 to replace and upgrade its public safety radio system. Total amount of $123,193. I think you've heard some stuff on that in the, in the past. Callis 911 is upgrading their, their radios. Our radios are way old and out of date, and we need to upgrade ours that we use for Public Works and different things. And so we put it in our local agreement with Callis 911, so the bid will include, we don't have to go out and bid our own price, so it'll be included with a larger bid. Vouchers last weekend, amount of $4,507,103.86. And that's consent agenda. Any questions, comments on that? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Hey, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Remember, item three is not part of it this week. Okay, just as a reminder. Okay, see no, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, couple things I wanted to touch on. Today, I think we made the, the paper on a couple of articles, and I thought I'd touch on those, because, oh, first off, let me, we started discussions on budget Monday, yesterday with, with Kathy, and, and she presented, she had held a workshop with department heads. I don't know how, how many people were, were there, but they just kind of kicked around some ideas, and she gave us a document, just a list of ideas and thoughts that came from department heads on to what to look for in the budget. None of these things are in concrete, but I asked her if she wouldn't mind, wouldn't mind having some available in case the public wanted to see those, so you'll find those over on the, on the desk there. If you want to take those, if you want to just look at, I'll repeat again, nothing in there is in, in concrete, but it's just a list of, of thoughts and ideas coming from departments that we review, and everybody has a chance to review, and, and since the budget, it's your money, you should have a chance to review it too. Okay, so she did that for us, if you want that. HOJ remodel. I asked, we have, you're going to, what you're going to see when we do that, when's that kickoff, Savannah? Is it August? August 18th is when we start doing the big remodel at HOJ. A part of our, our deal with that is, is on Fridays, HOJ will be closed down, so our contractors will have full weekend to work. It's all part of the, the timeline to do that. What that means on Fridays, there'll be times when Superior Court and District Court use this building. And in, their use of this building comes with some things that we need to change over here. Things we, they're asking for and, and to make the, their, to make it work, and so Public Works is, is driving that, and I asked Savannah to give us kind of a what we see in cost for that. We're trying to monitor what the costs are of making these changes over, over here. And so at this point in time, I think she sent out an email to us, and we're looking at approximately $46,000 to $50,000 right at this point in time. There's a, we need to do some audio visual in the meeting room over there for District Court is basically going to use that, the, the big meeting room. I think Security Court will use here. the big meeting room. I think Security Court will use here. Yeah, maybe I can have her trade choices with you, Hal. Thank you. I'm trying to relay all this stuff.
Security measures.
Yeah. Is it okay to ask you to give a brief rundown of what it's going to look like?
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, Savannah Clement, Public Services. And so, yeah, Commissioner Dahl was correct. So we'll be utilizing both the Commissioners Hearing Room for Superior Court on Fridays. And then the general meeting room right across the hall will be used for District Court. And so we do have to make some changes in that room. This room's actually, as you're probably most aware, pretty well set up for court. We've got seating, we've got A V, we've got the ability to do virtual court, and we have a stand. G M R is not really set up that well. The primary, the the large cost there will be the audio visual. And the courts are required to record, save, and store their court proceedings, and so that's the larger cost, which is about twenty-four thousand dollars. We're calling it a pop-up courtroom A V feature, which means there's no fixtures. So here, you know, you see everything's mounted, and we've got things affixed to the the walls, et cetera. And for this situation, we're hoping that we can use it really anywhere. And we would have to hold court in the future. And so it'll be kind of like a mobile, again, pop-up courtroom. And so if there was an emergency at the Hall of Justice, or and we couldn't hold court there for whatever reason, we would be be able to mobilize that really anywhere that we could functionally hold court. So that's the the higher cost there, and these costs are outside of the H vac replacement project scope. So that's why we wanted to make sure we brought it to the board and budget, so that we can make sure we include those costs moving forward, and it's about fifty thousand dollars. Those other costs, if you want me to continue. And the remaining costs are a baggage scanner, so we actually only have two. Ones used at the jail for court, and the other ones used at the Hall of Justice. And so we would need a baggage scanner here, and so we're looking at the most cost-effective ways to do that. If it's a longer-term lease, or if we spend an extra couple thousand dollars and want to own the baggage scanner instead of leasing. So we're kind of bringing that to Kathy and the budget team to consider what our options are, making sure we would have a use for a third one. And it wouldn't just be a piece of equipment kind of hanging around. So I reached out to the event center to see if they had a use for potential baggage scanner if we decided to purchase one. Some of the other smaller costs are we have to actually build a platform for the judges, so that they're able to be a little bit above the crowd, so they can see kind of like you guys are right now, which would only be about the height of a step. So that would be an added cost as well.
Yeah, I obviously, we want to monitor this stuff, and I want you to know what's going on over over here, but I think the option is that you only have people working part-time or something on Friday over there, and you extend their work over there. I think the cost of that may outweigh some of what we do over over here. So we're just we want to pay attention to this, but I think it's, at this point in time, it's the right right way to go and make it work.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Excuse me. If, at the Hall of Justice, if the baggage scanner that is there now failed, would it shut down the Hall of Justice till it was fixed?
Um, I would anticipate, I'm not super involved with that, the the security and the planning, but I would anticipate that we would reach out to our vendor, and we would get a rental in place. I don't think it would stop anything. What they would transition to is more of a search. They would have to kind of hand search anybody who wanted to bring a bag.
On, okay.
Correct. We still have a metal detector there as well. And we actually have an added metal, we have an extra metal detector, which we'll be using here, so that's not going to be an added cost. We're using one we already have.
Yeah.
So that's a backup there as well.
Okay, I appreciate your time. This is, this is a big project over there, and and kudos to Public Works there. They put a lot of time in coordinating with the vendors and and everything else. And I just, as you start seeing differences over here, that's what it's about. Is we're we're trying to accommodate getting that building completed in the most timely fashion we can.
No, and we appreciate the opportunity to come in front of the public because it is a high-cost item to replace the H vac and electrical components of that building. You know, the most costly things that we work on, capital improvements, are a roof, an H vac, and electrical. So we're doing a lot of that at the Hall of Justice. So the public will see some of those agreements coming through. We're partnering with the state and an energy, they call it ESCO, but it's an energy, construction, design, build company. And so the public will see those coming through to make sure that they're on record and that it's transparent. If there's questions. I also brought a lot of handouts because I wasn't sure, so I'll leave those out for a review. It's a lot of information, but it's good information.
Okay. Thank you. A couple of articles came out today. I read read one. One was on Sanctuary County. We had a discussion as a board on that, because Lewis County went into a process. They basically did a resolution on Sanctuary County, and and when I was reading about it and read through the resolution, they were their concerns were that they would lose, I think the paper said this morning, over thirty million dollars in federal funds if the federal government shut off funds. And so we were trying to decide is that it it's a concern. The feds can shut off funds anytime they they want. I don't really have control over them. There's not much we can do, except Stephen and I can get up and scream and holler at them, but that's about about it. And is is the process of going through that, is it making a difference, or is it just? Yeah, I hate that word, and they use it today, and I said it, political grandstanding, but I mean it in the sense that any time you see something in this arena, you wonder how much it is is trying to make a political point versus how much is an actual thing that's trying to be be fixed. I always try to figure out where that is on the spectrum. And when I read through the resolution and and our legal counsel chimed in on their resolution, it basically just it 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 doesn't change the law. Are, we're the same. The county does not have any policy ordinance or resolution that prohibits or limits cooperation with federal immigration enforcement. We have that in Callis County. It's no different. So they basically, what they're saying up there, they did a resolution that just says, we are not a sanctuary county, but we'll comply with the laws. So I didn't see a whole lot of meat on that, and is it something that we talked about it, is it something worth us worth tackling at this point in time? When we got our other things on, and and we said at this point in time, I think we monitor, but it's not we don't see it, I don't see a benefit from it. We don't, number one, we don't get over thirty million from the feds. The funds we get from the feds are usually construction-type projects. Your fist passage, and a lot of those funds go through the state and then down to us. So if the feds get in a battle with the state, which our state seems to be have a propensity of trying to battle the feds, there's not a lot that Callis County can do anyway. The funds we've gotten directly from the Fed were, in my knowledge, were ARPA funds that came to us, and those came to us twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in that area. I mean, and and we've assigned those funds to different projects, and the projects will work through, and they'll get paid out of there. I I would assume the Fed funds we have are all construction, like the bridges out in Pleasant Hill Road, the bridge at Tower Road, some of the fist passage, the culverts you see, those type type of things. We don't really if we get any operating funds from the feds, it's real small. It's almost nil. So so that's a little deeper insight into the the story you'll see. It's it's we'll we'll comply with with any law that's out there. It won't change. Lewis County isn't changing anything either, other than just trying to say we're not. The other item you'll see up is there's, and I didn't have a chance to read this one, but there was a discussion on came to us from the Office of Financial Management that Callis County is estimated to be above a hundred residents per square mile, which takes us out of rural designation. When you're in rural designation, you get a six and a half percent of sales tax goes to the state of Washington, and if you're a rural designated county, counties, they get a rebate of those of one-tenth, one-tenth of of that comes back to the county. We can use it for rural development. Rural development being infrastructure. We've used it on 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 parks that public can use, those type of things. And over the years, we've probably spent, I think, around thirty million dollars on different projects. We've done things down to Port Longview. We've extended water lines and stuff for for Cass Rock. We've we've helped Calama with their their water system capacity. We have one out this year for Port Longview for their rail extension project. For, they're all projects that we've used to, and prior commissioners to us have tried to set those funds up for something that will, you can, it's tangible, something that will help development in the future and and something that is beneficial to the public, not just salaries and benefits and those those type of things. So if we lose those funds, we get about two point eight to three million a year on that. It's it's it will, it will be a dent in some of the things we can do. It it's it's not funds we use for operation of the county. It's funds that we take advantage of and rebate back to our cities and and our ports for help. But we will, and I think our finance people are looking because in it, it it looks like we get it through two thousand fifty-four, even though we wouldn't qualify past that, but I think we're trying to verify that. But but once again, you're talking about an entity, a government entity, and they could say next year, we're not going to send them anymore because you're over a a hundred per square mile. So that's what that article's about, and it's it it would be in my view, it'd be sad because I think we've done some really good, and and once again, I'm giving credit to Commissioners way before us because it's come in way before we did, but they've been real good about making sure it's infrastructure-type things and things that would benefit the county as a whole. So that's the other article in in the paper. What else we got going on? Next Tuesday, Department Ecology will be in here at ten. And at eleven o'clock next Tuesday, we we added Callis County Mental Health Facility. We have a we came in became aware of not just an individual, but a group of individuals that have put together mental health facilities in in different cities in the in the state. Right now, they're looking at a place, and have they been public with it? They've purchased the old Charlie's Building. If people know that. And that'll be become a mental health facility, and and the purpose of the conversation, and we, I haven't had anything prior with them because I wanted them to come in and it'd just be I wanted to make sure it was fresh, fresh questions. What I'm looking for here is, we have a proposal that we want to look down that road. Well, these people have been doing it. So I think it's, it would be very beneficial to see what kind of costs they're running into, what kind of things they're running into, licensing things from the state. What what are the obstacles, and what do they see the benefits of the places they have? So I think it'll be a good conversation, and I would encourage you to stick around. We put it on Tuesday. It just makes your day longer, but if I put it on Wednesday, you won't show up. So we're going to put it on Tuesday. And it'll make the day a little bit longer, but I think it'll be a great, great discussion. I I Commissioner Raider has said a couple of times, unless we can get comfortable with the finances of it, it it's really hard to see how how it can go. And I think they can give us some insight of the hurdles they see and how, what it's like dealing with the state of Washington and doing this. So I think it'll be a good thing, and and hopefully you'll be in attendance for that. Did I miss anything? Anything you want to add?
Twenty-ninth is Board of Health.
Twenty-ninth is Board of Health, yeah. Okay, with that, we'll open it up to you. Unless I answered all your questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to follow up on the sanctuary city-states perspective, the article in the paper said, quote, "Washington state law limits the availability of state and local law enforcement to provide information and assistance to federal investigation authorities and states that they cannot make arrests based only on immigration violations." It just opens the, the kind of the can of worms that says, what what is the limitation, and we have state laws, we have federal laws, and where do we stand? It would be I don't know that you're going to have the answers, but it would be beneficial to the community if our county sheriff would have a kind of a public session, maybe even one here. The kind of states, where do we stand in this city, county, and in the state between state and federal laws? And the enforcement of those or or non-enforcement of those?
Yeah, I, you know, Ron, that's that that's a good point, and it what further cemented is a good point is you can't find a universal definition for what a sanctuary city or sanctuary state is. It seems to be all over the board and and kind of what people want it to be. So I, I, we can ask the the sheriff, maybe come and kind of give his views on on how they look at that, and how they they work with ICE or if they get those kind of requests. We will make that request. I can't promise it, we'll get them in, but certainly make that request over the sheriff.
Well, and it's kind, well, it's personal in two ways. Number one, the sheriff is our elected law official representing us in this county, both as a county and as individuals. For instance, if a bunch of feds showed up at my door knocking for some reason, I would want to say, hold it. Let me call my local sheriff to help represent me and my rights in this state, and I want to know that where he's going to stand on that.
Yeah. Yeah, don't don't disagree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Are you coming up, Tim? Okay. Can we put a request out to Brad just to see?
Hey, I just have an observation. This has nothing to do with what you're talking about here, but I noticed over by the golf course there at Three Rivers, you know, they put in all those houses, all brand-new houses. And as I go by there, I see they all have a big propane tank. Now, didn't we have to go through a code revision to make sure that we weren't using gas anymore? Sounds like they must have got some kind of workaround, you know?
Those are all, that's not county, is it? That that's City of Kelsall?
Is that City of Kelsall there?
That's City of Kelsall there, and and I I know there was
Yeah, but I thought that was, I thought that was a state.
Stuff on natural gas, and and we had been I don't know that we changed a whole lot actually in county here, Tim. I, I don't, I don't think we changed a lot of that.
Well, I was just, I was just looking at at that, but we have, I also drove out woodland area there, and you're going up Lewis River. You know, all them, they're building out there huge new houses.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if, is that the county there? Is a
That's also City Woodland. I I was down at those meetings, and and I think the ones you're talking about, initially, they were proposed as like two hundred-plus apartments, and then they switched it to housing development out in there, and I I think that's what you're referring, because that's what I have knowledge of anyway, and that's City of Woodland.
Yeah, that's a, that's going to add a lot more cars to that one spot. You know, last
Anytime you add cars on that that highway there, it's a problem, right?
Even one, and I'm looking at the number of units they're projecting to put in there. You're looking at maybe eight hundred to a thousand more cars coming into that that one spot. I'm glad I don't live out there. Nice houses, but they're building them on previously flooded land, too. You know, that's one of those spots. I remember when Clinton came here to look at that, you know, it was like, because it was all underwater. And viewing that stuff in Texas, I I'm looking at this from a a board of the Planning Commission, you know, it's like so I I found the propane thing kind of funny out there, seeing as how we had worked around that. I don't think they're heating water with it, but I think those tanks are for cooking, but I guess that don't really matter here. I think that's where their stove tops. I don't see the vents coming out for a hot water heater for being on gas, but there's that. And then two more things that are more national-level stuff, I guess you might say, but Epstein didn't kill himself, and we're funding genocide.
Brad is on? Brad? Okay. Brad, I didn't know if you had some comments on on the question we had.
There it is. Well, good morning. No, I I'm not sure what the topic was, to be honest with you.
Let me try and paraphrase. Ron, it was basically your relationship with ICE and how how you interact with him because we've we've seen Lewis County looked at, or they did a resolution on Sanctuary City. We had a discussion down here and and had decided that we're we're staying right where we're at at this moment in time. And I think the question was solved around how you interact or how your department, how you see your definition of what a sanctuary city is and how you interact with ICE and how you represent the people. If they have that interaction, do you step in and represent it or or just what the process is? That's probably a a long question. I don't know if I covered it all.
Okay, I see Ron's stepping up.
Yes, Sheriff Thurman. The question really said is that the article in the paper says that Washington has some exceptions to enforcement of the federal laws, et cetera. And so what we as the citizens don't understand, the sanctuary city, sanctuary state, and where we really stand, and and that's, we're not going to know the answer to that. But I look to you and your department. You are my elected law law enforcement official for the county and representing us more on, and I'll just take it as a personal basis. So if, and I'll just use it generically, if some feds showed up at my door knocking on it, demanding this or that, and I say, I don't know what in the heck's going on here. I have no idea. I would like to have the option of calling my sheriff's office and saying, hey, would you come on over here and stand in and let me be my representative and tell me where I'm right, wrong, or put the handcuffs on? Just as a personal representative of us as our elected law official for this county.
Sure. Well, in in general, my thirty-seven years, you can say we've had very, very little interaction with immigration enforcement issues, primarily that's occurred in the jail itself. They used to come in on a regular basis into the jail, check the roster, and they could, the immigration officers themselves could hand right out a detainer which said, when you're done with this person for state charges, we'll come and get them. And that was recognized for a number of years. And there was a court case, I believe, ten to twelve years ago. Started in Clackamas County, Oregon, I believe, where they said that to do so, you really have to have judicial review. A judge's signature on any paperwork, in essence, a warrant of arrest from a judge to take action. So I know our our jail, in many jails, I think most jails and the whole Ninth Circuit were eliminated from, started following that practice. They would not honor these handwritten detainers from immigration officers themselves that came in. For us at the sheriff's office, we haven't, the sheriff hasn't been in control of the jail since nineteen ninety-one, so it's been a county Department of Corrections issue dealing with with that issue. What what we can do and still do, if there's a federal warrant of arrest, that means a warrant signed by a federal magistrate. Then we can arrest them on that. And also, our jail will accept them. The jail wouldn't accept anything less than something signed by a judge or a federal judge in the form of an arrest warrant. They would detain them. They could book them in our, the jail. And then the feds, feds would come and get them and take them to one of their facilities in the in the region. So as far as that, as far as them being active in the field, I've not known or heard anything about ICE being active in our community, coming in on their own or taking any enforcement action. I've not heard of any of that occurring or going on. They've not asked for our help. And essentially, I guess my position would be if they came in, they do, do you have federal authority? The U S Constitution is the supreme law of the land, so they do have legal authority to come in and exercise their rights under the federal constitution. Our role in that would be, only would be for a public safety role. If they ask us to step in, if they're doing something basically to ensure the safety of not only themselves, but the citizens involved as well. And that, again, that has not happened either at this point. And I know I did read the Lewis County Resolution, the Mr. Jensen, the prosecutor's office did send that out to myself and the commissioners on on that. Just stating that they are not a sanctuary county. I think we are not a sanctuary county either by any definition either. There was a state law passed a few years back, Keep Portioning Working Act, which did essentially handcuff law enforcement and state agencies from cooperating with federal authorities, giving information such as driver's license records. And any data that we might have and that we have in our database, sharing that with them kind of really prevented us from doing that. But by and large, ICE operates on their own and, like I said, they have not asked for direct assistance from us to cooperate or be part of their enforcement actions at this point. So hopefully, did that answer your question, Mr. Doll or Mr. Kozlowski?
Well, it would, as you mentioned, the Constitution, the the first and preeminent one for me is we live in a society, hopefully, that we are innocent until proven guilty. That certainly seems challenged at times here. But anyway, I'd like to be able to stand on that and say, hey, if I'm at my door in my car and being challenged, somebody's alleging, and I'm using me, but it could be any of us citizens, that we're, we've done something, whatever, that we could actually count on our local sheriff also to help defend that right and say, hey, this person is innocent until proven guilty and that this is the procedure that we'll go through to assure that.
Yeah, if that were to arise and people, you know, ask us to intervene or step step in, we would certainly do so. I mean, verify the credentials of any outside authorities, whether they be federal or from other counties or even out-of-state officers that come here. We, that happens on occasion as well. We certainly want to verify their identity and make sure they have the legal authority to do what they're doing. In case, some cases, we consult with a prosecuting attorney on cases like that. The one that comes up from time to time is out-of-state custody orders. Like where somebody, a parent has brought kids to Washington State and there's an out-of-state custody order that they violated. So there's a process we have to go through with that, with you get the out-of-state order here, run it through our courts before we can take action on behalf of the the parent from the other state who's been denied their, their rights have been awarded by a court there. So there is a, there is a interaction between ourselves, a prosecutor and the courts on situations like this. And it's essentially a case-by-case basis without specifics. It depends on each individual case that that would arise.
Very good. Thank you. And you said some key words that would, that we would, as an individual, wouldn't know to verify credentials and other things of individuals showing up that they are both credentialed and have the authority to do what they're doing at that point. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, see, nothing else. As always, we thank you for participating. It's your government. We appreciate your time. We will adjourn.